You reapply according to, according to my understanding of it.
Where we got it from?
And that comes from the state, which is why they want to redo the definition.
That was a legal advice from Morgan.
Right.
Okay.
That if, uh, on a renewal, it has to be advertised, it has to, you know, butters have to be notified and all that stuff.
Well, I assume that, but we think it still landed at the title of renewal.
Yeah, but then now, some of these ones that are grandfathered in.
Absolutely.
Now we're gonna have to come up to bylaws, they're already built.
That's right.
Somebody did.
According to the building inspector, either you comply or you don't. It's kind of that cut and dry. I know.
Like against the $300 a day thing or something, I don't know.
And then, you know, what kind of time period you have to, to bring it up to date and...
Yikes.
Gotta use a better system for that.
I think the technical, yeah, they do with that.
Right?
And find out, at least find out what the other towns, those similar size and square foot do.
I was reading some...
So we adopt as a state law?
You have to.
Are you talking about going out there?
No, 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 but I just happened to run into that reading some of the different bylaws.
Yeah.
And I think, pretty much, any residential zone you can, you can have, um, up to two. One of those quote, it's not, if you can have one housing unit, any, any house can apply for it, doesn't even get it. But it's, they don't, I don't think that they, um, have the, uh, the moratorium that we have when we're not gonna allow.
Yeah.
You know, in other words, they, everybody has the ability to have one renter. If you go through the proper channels and satisfy the proper, I think, in Kingston, that's how it is.
Wow. And it's not even called an in-law apartment.
It's really not called, right, I don't think it's called an in-law apartment. That way like the situation would just have that problem.
Or does it just, makes it just a renter or are there separate, like?
Uh, I'm not gonna reread it closely, but I, I didn't see in-law apartment like we, like we have it.
Cause some people might have, somebody rented out a bedroom or something.
Right, it might be a friend or something more, and it seems a little more leany though.
And what, couldn't you do that and then, if it was a, I don't know.
Yeah, is it gonna affect anybody, whether it's your uncle or your family, it's the same question, you know?
Definitely. Well, seeing that it's after seven o'clock, I'll open the, the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, February 12th, 2018. Let's see, let's go through our agenda here. Approval on the minutes of January 8th, 2018. Now, take a quick look at that. Corrections, misspellings, or additions or deletions. Oh, I can also see in here that the planning board, the, also at the meeting was suggested by the selectmen that, and I went to bat for the board, I want you all to know that. That they thought it would be a great idea that if the zoning board, like, met with the planning board, so that on an application, in the application process now, it's, it was basically said, okay, who goes first? Do you go to the zoning board first, and then to the planning board? Or you go to the planning board for site planning view, then you come for your, you know, your variance or your special permit or whatever? And then how does the board of health and what fit in? And they, and then, when do they meet versus when do we meet and whatnot? So they, uh, this is Roy actually said they thought it'd be a good idea that, that the zoning board, like, meet with the planning board. So I said, well...
Like, have all of our meetings at the same time?
So on an application, one person could come in and hit basically both boards at the same night, you know?
I don't know.
Get the, get the process done. I said, first advice guy, I said, so if you were doubling our meeting time, then are you gonna double us out? And they said, absolutely yes, no problem. So we got a huge raise. We don't get paid, so two times nothing.
We've been gunning for that raise.
Yeah, right?
Throw yourself a raise, stand up on the table.
And check the chair. Okay, back to the minutes, does anybody see any corrections or anything we need? Okay, I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes on Monday, January 8th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to accept the main, many minutes on Monday, January 8th, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, it's been a motion, a second to accept the minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Nice job, by the way. Okay, where are we?
So, me?
Did you want to go, uh...
Do you wanna, um, read the central records or about, cause that was originally...
What's this, oh, this is for Mrs.?
Siegel. Well, that's from...
Okay, we have some correspondence, that's our next thing anyway. A letter dated, uh, February 12th, 2018 to the zoning board of appeals. "I am the neighbor of Velma Siegel since 1978, and she came over yesterday to see me, bought a letter she received from you from the board. After reading it, she wanted to know what to do to help her, therefore I would like the zoning board to give the applicant more time, plus so I could help her in, in some way. Could you please give her until March 12th to meet with you, and I would also come with her. Thank you for your assistance, Kenneth Fenton, 96th Circuit Street." Uh, do we have any correspondence from the applicant to, to extend her, uh, I mean...
Yeah, that was it.
I don't know if he's, it doesn't say anywhere that he's doing it representing her, he's just trying to help her.
Right, and she could not be reached, she didn't have, um, he said that she didn't, he didn't think she had access to email. And she was already at work today when he came in to do that, so I had to write that as something.
Okay, can we, uh, I would suggest, as you know, the pleasure of the board, that we, we contact the applicant and have her say, you know, in writing, to accept a continuance until the March. What is it, the March what here?
12th.
March 12th. How's that sound with you guys, sorry?
Has she made with us on my side?
Uh, according to the building inspector, he, he has spoken with her, I don't know if she's actually met with him, but, uh...
Do you want the letter that I've sent to her to read?
Sure, that's a...
Can somebody just grab it up there for her, sorry, but thank you.
So sorry, you know, he hasn't, he hasn't gone?
Um, no, other than to explain what, what the deal is. This is a, uh, a letter dated January 17th, 2018, to Velma Siegel, 97th Circuit Street in Halifax, regarding petition number 565. Dear Mrs. Siegel, at a meeting held on Monday, January 8th, 2018, the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals approved your request to withdraw without prejudice petition 565 for special permit renewal for an in-law apartment. In enclosed is a copy of your decision letter from December 11th, 2002, with conditions of your special permit set forth by the Zoning Board of Appeals on December 9th, 2002. To apply for renewal of your special permit, all of these conditions must be met. Uh, we have added you to the agenda for the next zoning board meeting on February 12th, 2018, at 7:10, to review your petition for renewal. If you should need more time to meet these conditions, please contact the board to reschedule for the meeting on March 12th. If you have any further concerns regarding this matter, please contact the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Sincerely, Robert Gaynor, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals." Okay, uh, you know, that, that was the request, and I, and I think that was the purpose of, uh, of the letter that was sent, but, uh, we really should have something, I think we should have something in writing from her. So if we could contact her tomorrow, that, that would be...
Sure.
That would be awesome.
And let's continue until pending her letter?
Sure, we could do that.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, postpone, uh...
Petition 565.
Petition 565, pending agreement in writing from Ms. Siegel, uh, for March 12th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been motion and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, to, uh, extend the meeting to, uh, March 12th, 2018. Okay, uh, what time we got, we still got time? How about, uh, we'll go on, what else do you have that, that you wanted to hit first, or you wanna start with the correspondence?
Sure, let's do that. The first, that's a long one.
This is a, uh, letter to Gordon Andrews from Charlie Sealy regarding 340 slash 348 on Ponsett Street. Uh, yes, it is. Uh, Mr. Andrews. Dear Mr. Andrews, I've been duly appointed as a temporary Halifax zoning enforcement officer and have been asked to respond... Asked, have been asked to respond to your December 21st, 2017 zoning enforcement request regarding property at 340, 348 on Ponsett Street, parentheses, property, in which you stated that there is no special permit relief for a multifamily. You sent at the property, and so you assert that the current use of the property for multifamily dwelling is illegal. I understand you, you seek a cease and desist order to issue, uh, to require the sixth unit multifamily dwelling use of the property to be discontinued. I hereby deny your zoning enforcement request for a cease and desist order as set forth below because of the necessary special permit relief to allow the sixth unit multifamily dwelling use at the property duly issued in 2014 and was not timely appealed. I reviewed this matter and determined that the necessary special permit relief to allow the present sixth unit multifamily dwelling use at the property was issued by a 4-1 May 19th, 2014 vote of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Parenthesis, so to require super majority vote required under general law, chapter 40A, section 9, was achieved. The 2014 special permit decision was duly filed with the town clerk's office on May 20th, 2014, and was not timely appealed within the following 20 days as required under general law, chapter 48, section 17. The copy of the 2014 special permit is enclosed here with. The 2014 vote on the special permit expressly allowed the sixth dwelling use at the property that now is in place, and the special permit relief was granted as an extension of a prior non-conforming use. I understand you disagree with this underlying factual basis upon which 2014 special permit decision rests. However, any appeal from the 2014 special permit decision had to be taken in a timely fashion within 20 days of the special permit decision having been filed with the town clerk's office in 2014. Furthermore, I understand the 2014 special permit was timely exercised by the holder of the special permit. Since no appeal was timely taken from the 2014 special permit decision, and since the special permit was timely exercised, it is my determination that the 2014 special permit took final force in effect, and the current sixth unit multifamily dwelling use is allowed. And therefore, your request for zoning enforcement in December of 2017 is an untimely appeal of the 2014 special permit relief. And therefore, your zoning enforcement request must be denied as untimely. Finally, I note that you assert that the application for special permit relief sought for the property was withdrawn. However, the Zoning Board of Appeals minutes indicates that the application that was withdrawn in 2014 was an application for variance relief in favor of reliance upon the special permit relief, which was not withdrawn, and had been granted to extend the prior non-conforming use at the property. Sincerely yours, Charlie Sealy, Town Administrator, Temporary Zoning Enforcement Officer. Note, under general law, chapter 48, section 8, any person who was agreed by this determination, i.e., has the necessary legal interest, may appeal this decision by filing an appeal with the Zoning Board of Appeals under general law, chapter 48, section 8, and under general law, chapter 48, section 15. Any such appeal shall be taken within 30 days from the date of this determination. Enclosed, 2014 special permit, copy sent to the board of selectmen, Zoning Board of Appeals, Town Use Council. And, and that's what he did, he sent that off. So, as in a copy of all our decision. And a copy of what it was, uh, the data certification at the town clerk's office. Good one. I don't know where this stands with the lawsuit or anything like that, but that was on the correspondence. Uh, how about a letter of, uh, let me sit up five minutes. Letter from Jerry Elliott, Director of Building Maintenance, is the new director?
Just for your info.
What's that, we need what?
Just...
Oh, just what, nothing? It's, uh, from Jerry Elliott, Director of Building Maintenance, January 11th, 2018, Director of Building Maintenance, change of personnel, a good day to everyone. I will be introducing Mr. Scott Materna to you over the next week. Scott will be stepping into my position as Director of Building Maintenance for the town of Halifax. He will assist me over the next couple of weeks in getting to know the town buildings. As with any new job, it will take time for him to fully comprehend this new position and the many aspects of his job. Scott brings an enormous amount of talent and experience in many areas. He will be an asset both to this department and the town for many years, I believe. Please welcome and support him as you have done me for this, in this department. I've enjoyed my time working for the municipal and school building committee, this town, and the people that I have come to work with and know. Respectfully, Jerry Elliott, Director of Building Maintenance." I, uh, met Scott, he was at the, uh, at the zoning, at the, uh, selectmen's meeting also. He, uh, seems like a very, uh, nice guy, and did not a lot of, uh, knowledge, hopefully that'll all work out. What do we have, we have three?
Yes, three in-laws, and you talked about all of those changes at the January 23rd select meeting.
These proposed zoning changes for the signature block, the time limited permits, and the building permit bylaw.
All of those.
Another topic that's come up during the interviewing once is whether the plans approved by the planning board and the zoning board of appeals should have a signature block on the plan for the signatures of appropriate boards. Some communities apparently have this, others do not. It might help to differentiate the plans that have been approved, officially approved, from any other versions. In essence, the plan will, with the signatures, becomes the official plan, something else to discuss on January 23rd. Yeah, that all, that all made sense. And the other one, the time unlimited permits. The zoning bylaw topic is for discussion in the fall, a matter of time limited permits, these included are not limited to special permits for in-law apartments. Currently, permit holders must return to the Zoning Board of Appeals at the end of the time period for their permits, generally to renew them. However, our butters and other interested parties are not informed about the renewal process, and therefore the question of whether renewals special permit for an additional time period is, is legitimate, is troublesome. At the same time, I have a permit holder in the Zoning Board of Appeals go through the time and expense notifying the butters and interested parties. Advertising the hearing, holding the hearing is more work than necessary, especially if no problems ever arisen with the permit. For all the time permits, especially ones related to businesses, business owners, uh, the business owner is left with a situation in which the owner, through use of special permits, establishes a business via a special permit, and whatever conditions that stipulate the Zoning Board of Appeals feels unnecessary. Yeah, we went through all of this, I don't think we have to go through all of that. And then the other one was for, uh, proposed change, building permit bylaw, it's been suggested that the town enact a building permit bylaw. One that per 780 Code of Massachusetts Regulations, I-105, a building permit is required in the town of Halifax for all such work. This would not be a zoning bylaw because it is not specific to zoning, but it would allow the building inspector to find any individual, company that begins work without a special permit, or without a building permit. Currently, the building inspector needs to work through the state, uh, Board of Building Regulators and standards a fairly awkward task, so that's all on the building inspector. All right, boom, we flew through that. All right, seeing that it's, uh, 20 past, uh, we have petition number 874, Ralph and Joanne Smith, Forte Carver Street, and in-law apartment. How we doing?
Doing good.
The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 12th, 2018, at 7:20 PM, and meeting number one of the town hall, 499 Plinath Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by Ralph and Joanne Smith for a special permit for an in-law apartment located at Forte Carver Street, Halifax, Mass. That property is owned by Ralph Smith, Halifax, Mass, or 2338, is shown on Assessors Map 70, Lot 23, Title Reference Book 24247, page 285. The applicant seeks a new special permit for their pre-existing in-law apartment for use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax, under section 167, 7D12, Area Zone Residential Petition 874. So we have a special permit in effect already? All right. Seems we just got to reading about all this.
And that was, uh, we, we messed up when we did the thing, you should have just put it in my mother's name and my name at the same time.
Yeah, who's in, who's in the, uh, who's in there now?
Yeah, me.
Okay, and who's in the in-law?
My brother-in-law.
Your brother-in-law?
Yep.
Your brother, right?
My brother, yes.
Uh, any questions from the boards who want to go through the, uh, the renewal application? And until things change, that's the only, I, I believe that's the only way we should, we should handle it. Go ahead, somebody wants to tell them, I'm sick of talking.
True, you're like, it wasn't before, or?
Yeah, just like, uh, you know, we did the application, and nothing's changed, we went through the questions. You can go through that, do that. Who's the other one?
The only thing that's changed is my mother died.
Your brother-in-law took over.
He moved into my apartment, I moved where my mother was.
But you're still the owner of Reckon?
Yes.
You too, you know what I mean, you plural.
Us.
Us, you're plural, us.
Us.
So they're basically changing it into her, Joanne, and Ralph's name rather than May, which is best for it.
Okay, so, so in effect, that has changed. The only thing that's changed is you moved over there, or in the brother-in-law moved into the, call it the main house. I don't know. Uh, any, any changes to the size of, or the partitions of the walls, or the, or the kitchens, or, or anything like that? Anybody else have any further questions? How about any feedback from any of the neighbors, anything like that? I mean, it's been there for how long now?
Maybe 14 to 15 years, I've done that.
Anybody else have any more questions?
It's pretty, kind of right, unlike some of them.
Okay. Uh, what have they done as far as notifying the butters, have we changed anything like that? That, you know, as far as the renewal goes?
No.
No?
Just notify the butters and that's it?
That was it, no feedback? No feedback to the...
No?
Okay, I'll accept a motion for, uh, petition number 874, renewal thereof, Ralph and Joanne Smith, of Forte Carver Street.
I'll make a motion to accept petition 874 as presented.
Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor of, uh, renewing the permit for the, uh, in-law apartment at Forte Carver Street, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We're good, uh...
Do they, do they rule people for like same steps? I printed it up just in case.
I think they do.
Yes. My sister.
Oh, we have to send that here.
I didn't realize I knew you about, 30 years.
Yeah.
Is he still around?
Oh, okay.
No.
Passed away 6 years ago.
Didn't he?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Thanks. Sorry to hear about your mother.
Yeah. She was pretty good, she was 90, 12.
It's always, um, there's always a few, uh, for the special permits we have.
Bingo. Good to go. Well, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Sorry, I didn't recognize you before.
That's fine.
Uh, it's all right, that's one better, cause I think I drive his kids to school. How's that?
Yeah.
Um, do we need to come back up and see you for paperwork to take to registry deeds and all that?
Yeah, I, it's all written in there.
Just to have after 20 days?
The usual, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Bingo. We're flying. Email from the assessors office?
So I asked the assessors about the charge of getting me a butters list for each in-law apartment. And this was their answer.
Forget it. From Dottie Lemore, Wednesday, January 17th. Uh, hi, uh, the board of assessors met and discussed this at their last meeting. What they decided was that when a town board requests the butters list, there is no charge. If a homeowner needs a, needs to apply to a board that requires it a butters list, i.e. conservation, selectmen, board of health, historic district, planning, zoning, building, and the homeowner is responsible for paying the $25 fee. If you have any questions, please let me know, thanks, Dottie. Hi, Dot. The zoning board has decided that the butters need to be notified for every in-law apartment we know going forward. The board wanted me to ask if the cost of getting each list would be covered by the town, or would, or would the expense have to fall on the applicant?
So that was her response on the town?
It sounds like, yes.
Yep.
Until it changes, they will have to pay the $25 of butters notification fee. That's how I read it. Any comments or anything that feel necessary to respond back?
So what are they changing, for example?
I, I think what they want to do is remove the time limit on any permit, so it wouldn't be five years that they'd have to come back.
They have to come back every five years.
Well, they wouldn't have to, right?
They wouldn't have to.
Then it's reckless of the land.
Once they, once they get it and that's it?
Right.
Unless they sell the house or something, right?
Right, and then, as far as...
How do you keep checking on them?
That's, yeah, right.
That's the thing, until you, until the building inspector receives a complaint, or has reason to go in, and find that they're not complying, then, then he just orders a cease and desist, or if necessary, which has happened down there at, what is it, the, uh, across from the Cowwash? You know, that's turned into craziness down there.
But this way here, the way this guy came in today, you're checking up on them every five years.
That's right. Exactly.
At least, at least you know if they're doing it, you know?
Yeah, they're all coming as if they've never heard of any of the rules before.
Right, and, and how would Mrs. Vella there ever know, we would ever know about that if she didn't come into the board every five years?
And you give a permit once and that's it, forget about it.
It's basically, uh, well, the same thing down on Hayward Street would, would turn into a boarding house.
See that big house that they put up?
Yeah. You know, until you get a complaint and you...
New neighbor moving in and it's all this going on, they don't even realize that they have recourse or that there's a...
Well, that's...
You know, I think, I think it's a good thing every five years.
I do too.
It's a pain, but...
And...
But why should we change it? I mean, why don't we keep it the same?
If that's the feeling of the board, then we can express that.
I mean, how do you...
Where'd the push come from?
Because of the legality of, of issuing a five-year renewal without, basically, doing a brand-new permit. In other words, they're saying it shouldn't be a renewal, the permit should expire.
Okay.
And then a new one be issued, which you'd have to go through the whole entire process.
That's crazy. We've been doing, we've been doing it this way for a long time.
Since I've been on board.
And it, and it worked pretty good, it was working pretty good. I mean, you're keeping, some of them are gonna...
Sure.
But you're gonna keep a check on them.
Would a butters, uh, informed, would the butters know what time?
On the renewals?
The ways to do it, yeah, on the renewal.
No, no, they wouldn't.
That's, that's the one change. That should be the one change.
I guess we could stipulate...
Right?
Wings are moving, I mean, it's a renewal, right?
I guess we could stipulate when we issue them, that, that it doesn't expire, but they have to come back before the war. You know, like, sometimes we'll issue something, and we'll say, hey, you have to come back here from now to...
That's, when you put a stipulation on it, it's coming. And this way here, we already have it, five years.
Right, I mean, we kinda already count it, but I don't know why we didn't add it.
We've done that with the food carts and, uh...
Yeah, right, yeah. Over the, the hot dog.
Why should we, you know, just handle this whole thing, and, and, okay, you have it for life, and they don't come back?
And then 90% of them are gonna be...
You know, they're, you know, they're selling them as duplexes.
Yeah, right.
Well, it's the same thing with the customary home occupation.
Yeah.
You know, we, we don't do renewals and that, that could go on, whatever, until a neighbor or somebody, a butter complains about something being in excess or...
Right, but this is, this is, like, if somebody's making money, they could be renting, it's, it's a different animal.
This has a, this has a shelf life.
That's basically the building inspector's position there.
Exactly what it is.
You can call a really good friend or whatever you want, you're taking in, you're collecting rent, you know?
Yeah. That's the intent of the Bible.
So we're doing it this way, you know, if the, if the person is still alive or deceased. If you do it the other way, you're not gonna know.
Yeah, how would we ever know that the gentleman's mom passed away?
I mean, let's say, we didn't know his mom passed away, you know? Unless he came out after five years, he came out, you know?
I think it's a very good thing to think a butters are nullified.
No, his brother-in-law's living there, is his brother-in-law a close relative, or?
It's gotta be a blood relative.
A blood relative to who, to his wife?
Yeah.
Well, she's on the deed, yeah.
She's on the deed. I think we should keep it the way it is, instead of?
So instead of the word renewal, it would expire in five years and they would have to reapply.
Does that increase the cost of the application?
Yes, it would.
Yeah, I mean, that's?
Because you have to advertise in the newspaper and everything. As well as notify the butters.
That's?
What's the cost of notifying the newspaper?
Eighty.
Eighty? So that's a hundred and five bucks every five years.
Why isn't, why do they need that, but why can't, it should, my opinion, it should stay a renewal. You should only have to notify the butters. I don't see why you have to come up with a new permit, it's existing, but?
No, 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 because there's no more renewal. It, it will expire. It's non-existent.
That's another thing we're not allowed to, is that what it is, this state doesn't allow it to be? Which means we can't do it without a balance either, like the, the commercial price?
If it was pre-existing, you don't have to advertise, you should then notify the butters.
So you don't, then, then you, you're making an exception, you can't do that.
I don't think you can.
If, if it's pre-existing?
Pre-existing, you're making an exception, I mean, they're, they're still, you know, in-law apartments, no matter what. You're gonna say, well, you did it before this time, you're all right, you're exempt. But now it's, the burden's on these people that come up with a hundred and five, a hundred and ten dollars every five years. And these people are gonna just come in and we're gonna say, okay?
No, 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 I don't mean, I don't mean in-law apartments, I mean, so the first time you have the in-law apartment, you would have to advertise. But then after five years, now it's a pre-existing in-law apartment.
Is it, you just do the notification?
Maybe just do the notification.
Notification of the butters.
Without advertising.
Without advertise.
That's what you're talking about.
But I, I think?
Five dollars, put them off the advertising.
But I think as a matter of definition, you know, for a special permit in the town of Halifax, it has to be advertised, it's a requirement, and it has to be, the butters have to be notified. I think that spells out, that's what the process is. I don't know if you can just up and change it without?
I mean, like that new, like that guy that came in?
I believe it is.
There's one guy in Hemlock Lane, you know, their new, uh, in-law apartment. Now, in five years, they're gonna come back and redo the permit over again? It's crazy. They're everything, you know?
If, if the requirements change for the in-law apartment, how are they gonna bring them up to any requirements that are available? Does that apply to businesses still? Special permits for businesses?
I think we should just leave it at that. Give it away, it is, I mean, that's my opinion, I don't care.
If it's a special permit for a commercial that runs a specific period of time, as an example, five years, then yes, they do have to come back up and, it expires, that's how it was explained to me, so it's, there's no such thing as a renewals per se.
But all, all permits, special permits that are out there, we've been renewing them.
We have, and that's, that's been our process.
So now everyone's gotta be a new one?
Right.
Does that cite your law, by law that was, or general law that was, does it cite that to you? I mean, it's just, how could you, how could it go on that long?
Actually, it was, Mass. General Law, year forty-eight. That's, it was cited, yeah. The building inspector said that. You know, if you'd like to, maybe we'll get a clarification, or did we at one point get a clarification from, from our, building inspector? Can ask him specifically if he could explain it to the board in, in writing?
How could it go on so long?
We can do that, if you'd like, we'll send out a letter.
I mean, a lot was talked that night, as to things that they were trying to change.
Right.
But they were also gonna review it all, that was just a, an opening statement, say, okay, it doesn't wanna do it for discussions. And I mean, that was also for affordable housing and everything else they were throwing, you know, kind of different ways of? Yeah, how do we, how do we, because I guess we're, we're wide open for forty-eight, or forty-nine, yeah.
We're under?
Unless we start doing, thinking of taking some of these vacant lots that are out there, that have been abandoned, and set up a, so you can build a house in that lot.
Four?
Four.
Forty-eight?
Yeah. So this way here, that lot there that's abandoned, it's only a small lot. But they'll waive the requirements of it, the house would have to suit and fit the lot. But then that would be part of the, trying to build up our, our backlog, our, our accounts with the forty B, so someone else can understand we're gonna put this whole copper, it's gonna be all?
I bet you we don't even get close to it even with that stuff.
Probably not, but I don't, what they're trying to do is show them ten?
Yeah.
That's the big thing, show them ten, you have to be ten percent, and we, the town, our town Halifax is less than one percent.
And when the guy came in, when they were doing all that stuff, it doesn't sound like they care if you're trying or not. You're under ten, they're just gonna say, yeah, go for it, you know?
Like the one on Franklin Street, that would have been?
Yeah, yeah, right, that's the one that the guy came in, yeah.
That's what they're trying to look at, is the, what are in the bylaws that are preventing any of this happening? Or how can you do it? And the way our bylaws are written right now, we are excluding everybody from doing anything as far as building. And that's one thing that's trying to take out some of the laws that are in there, or change them.
Yeah.
Because if we, if we don't do it now, we're gonna get caught.
Yeah.
So if we start to revamp them a little bit and put in different provisions here and there, it might cover us. That's, that's what they're trying to do with this whole thing, the property, the little apartments might be thrown into that too, or?
I mean, that, that place over there, like Home Fifty-Eight, would have been a good location for forty B. It would be set out back somewhere, you know? But they go in with it, they're in court now.
Oh, yeah, sure, bar?
The Halifax Trace?
Oh, the Halifax Trace.
What is it, Andrew's trying to take?
I have no idea.
I don't really think of it.
That's the first I, I haven't heard a name on it.
That is, that's stupid. Crazy. Shut it off.
Usually wait till that plane's off.
Hey, when we have the bills, let's do the bills.
Want the letter to?
Do we want, do you want to send the letter over? Can you ask him for clarification?
Might as well, settle it down, Ryan.
I mean, the rule is gonna be honest, not?
Dear Mr. Piccarelli, on, on the meeting of February twelfth, two thousand eighteen, it was, uh, the board's discussion to further clarify, uh, any changes in the current status for the process of, uh, renewal or in-law apartment. What's that?
It's on here anyway.
Oh, 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 I see.
This is recorded, that's it.
What we? You know, basically, in, including the, what we had discussed regarding, uh, the, uh, issues of checks and inconformity over the five-year period, uh, without, uh, without that five-year renewal, it's the board's feeling that there's a question on how we could possibly, uh, have, have control over, uh, the requirements set forth in the, in the, in the zoning bylaws without a system of checks and balances. I don't know, something like that, that would be great. Is that good? Do you want anything else in there?
No, that's, that's basically what we're going, yeah.
Would appreciate your, uh, your input in, uh, in future discussions with, with the boards in town, would be, or prior to having discussions with the board in town, would be good. Is that all right? Anybody want to add anything else in there? That's a very good system. Uh, O'Carney Planning Council agenda, let's do that. Anybody wanna see this, certainly make available, new business presentations, community concerns, other business. Thank you. Memo from the Planning Board, Form A Distribution on River Street. Do we have a that one? From Planning Board, Board of Appeals, subject Form A Distribution. Please find attached copy of a Form A that was included, that was endorsed by the Planning Board on February first, two thousand eighteen, area zone industrial. Do you know what they're doing here, along with agents? What this is?
Greenhouse.
They're coming with them?
Yeah, this is, it's right straight here.
Lot one, lot two.
Is it the greenhouse?
The greenhouse, is that what we're gonna call it?
Yeah.
What are they calling?
I mean?
Lot one, lot two.
Oh, did they create the lots?
Yeah, this is right off of Pratt Street, which is Pratt and River. This was the, uh, I think, I believe, was this the, uh, marijuana processing plant?
Yeah, so they created a lot for it?
The what?
Creating a lot for it, yeah.
It's located right on, on, on Rivers, on River Street, right?
Yeah, it's on, it's on River Street.
I thought it was gonna be, you know, right down in here. This is lot one, and lot two. Concrete structure.
It's lot one, right here.
Yeah.
Concrete outbuildings. Doesn't show a building.
They do like the airplanes, back here, and they do like that.
Well, I think you're right. I think this is where they?
Like the openings, like right in them, down there, the openings right here.
Is the name gate, is the name gate going in there, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Even the other side is, that's where they?
I don't know what they plan to do, and then they just showed the, the lots. I don't know what to tell you. Thirty-nine point one acres is lot one, and four hundred and forty-two acres is lot two, and that's what they show, lot one, lot two. Did they make a difference too? Form A, map one seventeen, lot one.
So they created a lot for it?
That must be what they're doing. All right, other than creating a lot, I, I don't see any other structures or use, or any changes other than lot one, lot two. Lot one, lot two. All right, and, if there are any other questions or anything like that, I'm sure you could direct our inquiries to the, to the Planning Board. Just do that up. Thank you. This is what?
One? It wasn't, it was?
Letter from the Building Commissioner to Nova Machine and Design, four thirteen Plymouth Street. The proposed business will light industrial use. February sixteenth, town owner, the Building Commissioner. Uh, Nova Machine and Design, five hundred Industrial Drive, Halifax, Mass. Uh, this letter is in response to your inquiry for the zoning determination regarding existing building located at four thirteen Plymouth Street, and your proposed business move from your current address, five hundred Industrial Drive. My determination based on your letter dated one thirty eighteen, and limited information you have provided is that your proposed business as presented would fall under the category of light industrial use defined in one sixty-seven three of the code, code of the town of Halifax. You, the applicant/business, are requesting light industrial use at the business zone property located at four thirteen Plymouth Street. Per chapter one sixty-seven seven, Schedule of Use Regulations, a special permit is required for light industrial use in the commercial or business district from the zoning board of appeals. The proposed use is allowed only by special permit on the business zone. Reasoning under one sixty-seven four B, the board would have opportunity to protect other uses in the surrounding area for potentially disruptive activities. In my opinion, if the zoning board of appeals were to allow and grant a special permit, perhaps they might think about some binding stipulations for the use and future protection of the area if deemed necessary. Also, in my opinion, the special permit should be attached to the applicant business that is requesting the use of the property at four thirteen Plymouth Street. Any future light industrial use at this location under a different applicant/business should be evaluated by the board on its own merits as to whether or not it would be disruptive to the surrounding area. This determination is for zoning purposes only. Approval from all other applicable boards will be required. Sincerely, Rob Piccarelli, Inspector of Buildings/Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Copies went Zone Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission, and the Planning Board.
It's four thirteen.
Is that the old Hollywood? That was, is that four thirteen?
Well, this is four ninety-nine, across the street's five hundred. I believe, yeah, going down the hill towards the station, the state, police station, new one is five forty. So it would be going down this way. And it would be on this side of the street, so it probably is the one at the corner of Indian Path and Plymouth Street. The old, uh?
Four thirteen Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass.
That's the way to do it.
This board is so high-tech.
That's funny. Must be where it is, yeah.
Cross from, you know, Hills Center, whatever.
This is, looks like it's saying on Indian Path, on the corner of Indian Path.
Yeah, yeah, it's a concrete building. I, I, it doesn't say what the industrial use is, or what they wanna do, other than Nova Machine, it sounds like, uh?
Some sort of manufacturing.
Machine and design.
I think I'm familiar with them. Yeah, if I know what they do.
What do they do?
Uh, they run, you know, they run machine tools, program on machine tools, I believe that's, that's the one. They're down on the, in the industrial park, down the end on the left.
Before the Dell?
It's mostly indoors.
It's, it's probably all indoors.
All indoors.
Is that the building on the left before the Dells?
Um, I'm not sure, which, I think it's right near the end when you head down, I think it's near the end. They used to be whites or something like that. Um, I think, well, machine tooling, that's what I do, I mean, that's what I know.
Yeah.
I'm pretty familiar with what this is. I've been in, I think I've been in there many years ago.
Well, I don't think?
It's probably, it's probably all indoors, but there's definitely one of those, for sure.
Yeah, there's no action by the board at this time other than notice of application and something will?
I think was probably?
Will probably, yeah, will probably be coming up soon or later.
Two thousand, two thousand fifteen, maybe, if I remember.
Alrighty.
I'm gonna run it a bit, I'm just, you know, I mean, just the?
What do we have, we have some bills?
Just one bill.
Just one bill?
No, it's small. You see, there, sheds all over the place. I think it's bigger than it looks, don't tell the, I can't.
When you drive by.
It looks pretty tiny. You're on fire.
Right now, go down to the industrial park.
Yeah.
I would never, certainly not again. That'd be suspended much longer.
What else have we got?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, do you need our formages?
You have mine, right?
No, that's for you, right?
This is for me.
That's for you.
Mine's in already.
That's why you're in the chat.
Mine hasn't printed yet. He didn't, he didn't print it yet.
That's what I did with that.
Who printed it for him?
It's like a motion.
Yeah, you guys all did tests over here.
There you go, that's right.
So still, should have tested it more than once. All right, anything else, any other new business, any discussions? How about a motion to adjourn?
I think a motion to adjourn, second.
There's been a motion to adjourn at second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.